Okay, it's been brought to my attention from the town attorney. We need to, uh, whist Councillor Wild.
He's up back.
Yeah, we can't start yet.
Councillor Wild.
Yeah, I can get him from here, I think.
Councillor Wild.
Yeah.
I'll turn the hearing aid back up, I promise.
It was brought to my attention, we need to pass the town council resolution, that Exhibit G that was in your package, that changed the wording that town's attorney explained that Councillor Wild had in question. Well, it was, I think you were reading from the old and it's been updated, the wording that we discussed earlier. We have to approve this change. Everybody all?
I apologize, I'm not following what Exhibit G is.
Well, it was in the original.
It's in the pa- the packet as a resol- it's in the packet as a resolution.
The statute requires the municipal officers to make certain findings with the development program, so this resolution was prepared to do that. It authorizes, with the revised language, it authorizes Susan to, if the state says, hey, you forgot to dot an i across the t or something, a little thing's amiss, she has the authority to correct that, but it's narrower language than we had before. But that needs to be passed and submitted as part of the application. Any more discussion on that? Do I have a motion?
I motion to accept the newest language on there, to pass that. Exhibit G.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Moving on to the next item, nominations, appointments, and elections. We have non-unfinished business, non-new business sewer commitment. Town manager?
Yes, the most recent, the most recent sewer billing that has just gone out recently, that covered the period from October 1st of 2014 through December 31st of 2014, in the amount of $121,916.40, the approval of this commitment allows legal authority for the collection of these sewer bills.
Thank you. The next item was, uh-
Oh, it needs a vote. Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the sewer commitment.
Second? Question? All in favor? The next item under new business is 5B, the independent moderator, we've already had that meeting. We had to cancel a council meeting, so this didn't get brought up. We had the meeting last Saturday morning on our goals and objectives, and the meeting went very well. We had five top items that we came up with that we feel we need to work on for this year. It was a very constructive meeting. The next is C, instruct town manager to prepare town budget, Councillor Dupre.
Yes, we actually talked about this on Saturday also, about the town manager preparing a town budget with a zero increase in the mill rate. Under this item, what I'd like to discuss with the council is something that we tried to do last year but couldn't do because we had a meeting, well, something in the same general area, because we didn't have a meeting, because we didn't have a quorum, is I'd like to, for the town council to agree to send a letter to the school saying that if they do not flat fund their budget this year, that the council will, um, will, I don't know how to word this, will pub- pu- publicly oppose the school budget, which means we can put, uh, signs at the polling place that say the council, uh, the council recommends you vote no on the school budget, or something to that effect, which the council would have to vote on that later. But what I'm asking tonight is if the council will agree to write a letter to the school board, um, asking them to please flat fund their budget, or the council will oppose it. And that, and that will help the town manager to do a zero increase.
If I'm understanding that, we want to send a letter over to the school board, but flat fund it, as you said, but to send a strong message that we need to stop with all these huge increases, year after year after year.
Yes, exactly.
I would be in favor of sending at least something over there to say, we've got to get it under control.
Any other comment?
Sue, you have probably countless conversations with administration at the school, I take it, back and forth about what they're looking at as far as increases, or there's communication going back and forth, correct?
Yes, the, in order to accommodate the request, I've had conversations with, the school is in the initial phases of its budget, it's facing, I understand, some fairly substantial increase in its health insurance rates this year, that their, their budget estimate for health insurance rates alone is, is more than $300,000 F an increase. They're, on an initial discussion, we're looking to try and keep the increase to no more than 3%, but even doing that would require substantial cuts to personnel or programs in order to accommodate the, their contractual obligation increases plus health insurance-related items, but that the net, and that the state is looking at flat funding education. So, that those increases would end up being moved along, but that the district was doing its best to minimize local increase impact to 2%, give or take, that there, it's an initial where they're starting from, and as I said, this is all very preliminary in what they're looking at, whether or not they're able to do better or worse with it, but that type of an increase, were it to come to pass, is more in line with increases that the town saw three, four, five years ago, as opposed to the last two years, where the increases have been in the $350,000 to $400,000 range. It's been, that would be in the $100,000, $110,000 range for Hamden share, which is a lot, but it's not $400,000, you know, if you're talking about compensation. So, I, they are aware that it's not sustainable to expect that the communities can absorb another, but there, as I said, 80-odd percent of their budget is personnel and contractual obligations, and so if they're in a contract and they're locked, then that's where they are. So, there, we have had conversations, we did, last year, have a councillor who attended school budget meetings to talk about potential impact, if you remember, Councillor McAvoy, not McAvoy, McPike, but it was M.C., I got the first two letters right, attended meetings to, to discuss those things. There was a discussion that, about sending a letter, and the council meeting canceled, and then timing-wise, it was never possible to get it done. So, if there's, you know, whatever the council directs to prepare a letter for the council's signature, strongly encouraging that, you know, that we can do that, or?
I guess I'm fine with that, that step, and if that's what we want to do, I think last year's council, we did a very good job at making an effort to educate the community on the impact of the school on taxes and, and the relationship to that. And through education, through the newsletters, through filming the school board meetings, you know, I think more people are aware, and, you know, I think we can take this step. At the end of the day, the obligations are there, I don't know what good it's going to do, I mean, the biggest impact we have is between them and the county. I'm willing to take it, but, you know, again, anything will help, I guess, or try to make some effort.
Councillor Shakespeare?
I got the part about the letter, but what was this, or else we're going to do what?
Oh, I was just saying, well, that's something, like I said, that the council would have to decide if they wanted to do anything like that later, whereas if we get one of those huge increases again, the council can actually publicly oppose the school, but that's not what we're voting on tonight.
Okay.
This is just for the letter.
I have no issue with sending the school committee over there a letter, you know, saying as such, but as far as doing anything else, like you say, with reservations, but yeah, I have no problem with, with a letter from the council.
Any other comments? Do you want to make a motion to send a letter, or?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the council send a letter to the school board, strongly encouraging them to flat fund or have as little increase as possible, whether it be, I mean, like we have to go out and change our health insurance, anything like that, but a letter just strongly encouraging them to flat fund or drastically reduce the amount of increases that we've seen in the past.
Second.
More discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item is under item D, hiring freeze, Councillor Wild.
We had discussed this in the earlier meeting, the finance committee meeting also, and to clarify what we have come to agree upon and what we were looking for is to make sure that any, any needs of replacing personnel that are currently on the payroll, that at least we know that it's, that it's occurring, so that we can keep the budget process well communicated with everybody. So, it's not necessarily a complete hiring freeze, but rather to keep us all informed during the budgetary process over the next several months.
Any other discussion?
Well, and the outcome of the earlier discussion was that I, what I told the council is that we won't, we won't replace or hire any positions without the council being first deprived of the vacancy and making a decision on its, whether it gets filled or not.
No, I'm, that's-
Councillor Shakespeare?
Yeah, I did, I did say at the finance meeting that I, I thought the town manager does an exceptional job of keeping the payroll down the best she can, and getting, getting the job done, and I've never seen in my six years that she would go out and hire anybody that wasn't necessary, and she does and has always let the council know, as far as I know, whenever she had to replace somebody that resigned or left for one reason or another. And so, I don't think that's, there's anything new here, she's always done that, but that's fine.
Any other discussion? Okay, item E, feasibility of videotaping all committee meetings in addition to the council meetings, Councillor Wild.
The reason I have this on the agenda is I, I strongly encourage that we start taping the council meetings and the committee meetings. We do the council meetings already, but the committee meetings, we don't. I think it would be in, in all of our best interest to have it as transparent as possible for the general public that cannot attend these meetings. If we could move to have the committee meetings taped, just like we do with this meeting right here, I think it would be a good, strong step in, in public support in what we're doing, and so the public does get educated, so they do understand what it is that we're going through. It's not that easy to get the communication out to the public when we have half a dozen meetings every month that are not broadcast or are not taped, that this would just be a good step into increasing the communication for the public or the residents of, of Hamden. And if we're talking about taping the school committee, I think this would be right up there, the same thing.
Well, when you say tape, then all committee meetings are taped, as far as?
Video taped. I understand they're taped on a little tape recorder, but I'd like to see it as videotaping.
It isn't that, everything's transparent, because if you want to know what's going on, you can hear every word that's said, so there's nothing hidden. I just want the people to know that, that it's taped, so you can hear all the language.
We, I would just like to say, we, we discussed this last year, and the reason we did not do it, for a couple of reasons, the first reason was expense. We've, the cheapest way we could do it was we bought, how much did that recorder cost, Sue? 50 bucks. And we record every meeting in a voice file, can be emailed to anybody who has any questions about what's being said in those meetings. To spend the additional money to videotape it, I don't, I don't want to see me, and I'm sure no one else wants to, but you'd like to hear what the discussion's going to be there, thank you. You'd like to be, you'd like to see what the discussion, you want to hear what the discussion's all about. We've got that covered, and again, to your point, it's very transparent, nobody trying to hide anything in the grass, this is, it's, it's open.
Councillor Marvel?
I don't know what the cost would be. If, if it were cost neutral, or there wasn't a sizable cost, and we could do it with the setup we have in the room that we usually have the committee meetings in, I'd support it. This, this isn't real conducive to committee-level work. It's a lot better when you sit across the table from each other and just do the business. So, that's really all I have to offer, is I don't want to spend more money to videotape it, I don't think the need is that great, but if there weren't to be a cost, or the cost is mitigated sometime, then I'd recommend we do it in that other room, and Denise is shaking her head over there at me.
You go ahead first.
I was just going to say, from what I understand, as, we did bring this up last year, and if we were to be in here, we could do it at no additional cost if someone would learn how to turn on the machine back there and turn on the recorder. Is that correct, Denise? The hard, before you answer that, just the hard thing, when you listen to that audio recording, when I watch a council meeting, if I want to see a certain person speaking, it's much easier for me to listen to it instead of listening to an hour of an audiotape to try to find the place where I want to listen. That's the difference in listening to a videotape and an audio. Go, sorry Denise.
If you have it in this room, I think you need somebody in there, otherwise you're just going to get a voice and one shot, you're not going to get a-
You, Councillor Dupre is correct, somebody would have to get the equipment ready to record. You could set it up to do a wide shot, which we've done periodically, if we didn't have a videographer available, then somebody would have to ensure that all of the equipment was turned off, so it doesn't continue to tape all night long, and it would have to be done in this room. The equipment we have is old, antiquated, I'm not even sure how easy it would be to teach somebody at this point, Justin might be better at that than I would be, but hopefully before too long, we'll have some different equipment, maybe it'll behoove us to wait until new equipment comes along, I, I don't know, it's just a, I'm just throwing that out there, but.
Councillor Wild?
There is another reason, just like Carol said, there's, it's a little bit difficult to take a look at just an audiotape. It's a lot easier for the hearing impaired, which I am, to be able to look at a video and be able to follow it along, whereas I have a very difficult time just listening to a tape. Very, very difficult. I have about 42% of my hearing left, so without the ability for me to read lips and follow along, it's very, very difficult. And I imagine that I'm not the only person in town that has a disability that makes it a little bit more difficult, so there are more reasons than just, let's just tape it and be transparent. Let's make it easy. The, the point that I want to make is to better our communication, we've talked about educating the public, this is a really easy way to educate the public, it's set up a couple of tables right down front, put it on widescreen, it's good. So, that's my final point.
I have one more thing. And what Denise was saying about the new equipment, we've been talking about this since I got on the council, Sue, do you have any idea when we'll be getting the new equipment?
We now have NESCOM, who's contacted the company who's doing the proposal for us for the actual equipment, and we should have that for the next infrastructure committee meeting to look at, he's, I've been talking to Rodney Vero from NESCOM who's doing that. The money for funding it is what's tied to the renewal of the cable contract, which is for Hamden, in the same boat that Bangor and Brewer and everybody else who's got a contract with Time Warner in this region, which is that the contracts have expired and the joint negotiation or attempted renegotiation has not yet been finalized. That doesn't mean that when you get that, that you can't utilize funds from reserve to be replaced by the Time Warner money that's granted at the time of a renegotiation, but by the next infrastructure committee, there should be some pricing that talks about exactly what's necessary, because other than one piece of equipment in the back room, virtually everything here is, is not digitally receptive in terms of, of how it goes out of here or gets to Time Warner and all those kind of things. The, setting up a wide shot almost isn't going to give you the ability to see people's mouths, because you're going to be, it's a distant shot, you, you, all you see is, you know, there's no zooming in to see who's talking at, at this point, because we, we can't do that with this equipment unless you're, we have a Justin sitting in the other room. What we've done for the school board is we have hired a videographer who goes to the school board meetings with a video camera, he tapes the meetings, he turns them into a DVD, he brings that to Denise, who uploads it to the, the YouTube account that the town maintains with school board meetings on it, so that the public can see, not in real time, because we can't broadcast while he's doing it, but we do that, and the cost that, that council budgeted for that purpose for last year was approximately $1,200 a year, I think it was about $100 a month that they were considering in terms of the cost of that, based on a meeting that was a couple hour and another little bit of time. So, you have two planning and development, two, two finance committee, that's four, and then service and infrastructure, so you have six meetings a month as opposed to the two that the school has, so if you figured, if you wanted to do it and do it so that you produce something in the interim until you got, that you, somebody could watch and understand who was talking and what they said, the, the cost would probably be around $3,600 total to do that for every committee meeting for an entire year. And, and that would give you a product that allowed people to, it would be done much like we did the school, they see it, they can hear it and do whatever, so it would be possible to do that, we would just have to get somebody to do that.
Is it possible just to table this discussion for another time then? Because I wasn't aware that it would be that much more expensive or that much more money to do this, and I'm, I'm not at this point willing or wanting to increase expenditures. Maybe it's best to table this one for a later date.
Before it's tabled at all, because I've been waiting, this is deja vu all over again, like last year. We spent numerous hours discussing this, pros and cons, some councillors were for it, some were against it, like Councillor Saroye says, we've got the expense of it, and that's what we came up with last year. We come up with the, I'm going to say, basically disruption of the meeting, okay? No, not if it's, not in our face, but what happened last year is some people came in and were videoing it, and it ended up being in-your-face type thing, oh, will you move over there, please? Oh, don't sit there, oh, what about that, you know? So, we're there at committee meetings to do the hard work in preparation for the council meeting. The, like Councillor Ryder said, the doors are wide open, never locked, the public is welcome, and they have come to the meetings. Sorry if you have to be, what do you call it, come, come out of your household and wait for your family to see these meetings if you want to see them, but that's just the way it is, we're there, and, and, no, I'm, I'm not ready to spend money to tape committee meetings, I just don't feel it's necessary. They're taped verbally, and like I said, if anybody wants to see who is saying something, they can come to the meetings, I have no problem with that, so.
Any other discussion?
No, I guess I'm, I'm fine with tabling it until we can see with the new equipment what, what would be possible, because I would, I would like to see the video because it's more accessible to the public if it's broadcast rather than an, an audiotape that you have to, I've tried to listen to them, it's very hard to figure out what's going on unless you can, especially if you're looking for a certain thing that happened within an hour or two, so, but I'm, I'm fine with that, with tabling it also, so.
Public comment?
Alex King, 75, Ichabod. The only thing, as a private citizen, and I've attended a number of committee meetings, and I have attended committee meetings here in this room, and you're back to the private citizens setting, and you cannot hear, number one. The other thing that I'd have a concern with is, the committee meetings, the way they are now, are very informal, and the, the private citizens has a better opportunity to get into the conversation as, rather than have to wait to the end of it or a special time to comment on it, so, so that is a concern that I have, as one that does come to a lot of committee meetings. Thank you.
Any other public comment? So, we'll just put this on hold for a while, Councillor Wild?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, now we'll move to committee reports. Services Committee, Councillor McAvoy.
Thank you. Our next meeting, I, I don't have anything to report for this, we haven't had a meeting since the last time, but the last town council meeting. There is a meeting here in this chamber tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, and it will be here in this chamber at this, you know, bench, or whatever you want to call it, and it will be a little more formal than what it was last time. We'll be talking- We'll be talking about parks amenities, you know, barrels and benches and whatnot, possibly about Facebook for the, for the town, and a reappointment to something, pool board or whatever, and the library budget. So I encourage everybody to show up at six o'clock tomorrow night. That's what we'll be talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Infrastructure?
Yeah, I got out of it last time, but I'll have to report this time. We met on January twenty-sixth. I'll try to read my own notes. The town manager gave me good ones, and I thought I'd write them in my own squirrel. I don't know why. Under old business, GPS units had been installed in all the public works vehicles. There was going to be a meeting on January twenty-eighth with reps from T-Mobile and the city of Bangor that has to be rescheduled. The town manager will let us know when it is. We had had an arrangement with Planet Aid regarding the collection box at the transfer station. Planet Aid let the town know that they were no longer in a position to pay the five cents a pound fee they'd been paying along with it after discussion, including the fact that it would be a cost to us to go through the system if it wasn't collected and taken away. The recommendation from the committee was to keep it in place and not get paid the five cents a pound for it. On the new business, there was quite a bit of discussion about public works around services and costs, looking ahead regarding the budget and the position. The town manager brought us information comparing similar towns and categories of spending against what Hamden is doing. And we asked the town manager to prepare a draft outline for a potentially restructured department for the next infrastructure meeting, which will be on February twenty-third. Under committee comments, looking ahead, we'll need to create a site plan for any development and parking expansion over this way with the town office, the post office, and the pool site. That's around mitigating traffic on two oh two during soccer games in particular. And discussion about a grant previously received to support a watershed survey of Sucker Brook. And the short version of this is between personnel changes in which the person who had written the grant and was going to do the work no longer was employed by the town, and other things fully occupying town staff. It was the consensual recommendation of the committee to basically give the money back for that study. We can reapply in the future. If it turns out that we're going to be up against it to mitigate effluent and whatnot in that brook, we can reapply for the grant.
Thank you.
And I think that's all I have.
Planning and development, Counselor Shakespeare?
We had a meeting on February the fourth. Our planner was there, Bob Osborn. We had some committee applications, which we discussed. I updated the committee at that time on the MRC development progress. And that has to do with Fiber Right. Most of you are probably familiar with that name. There was quite an article in the paper, in the Bangor Daily, about Fiber Right possibly coming to Hamden into the Triangle area, and that's the mile-long road that was discussed tonight by Dean Bennett. Had the privilege of meeting the chief executive officer of Fiber Right, Craig Stewart-Paul, a very knowledgeable individual. And the MRC Municipal Review Committee decided to go ahead with a contract to bring Fiber Right into Hamden. So that's not a done deal yet. Has to meet state and federal and all kinds of other regulations and approvals, but it's a very positive, about sixty-five million dollar development for the town of Hamden. Similar, not similar, TIF-wise to AmerisProject, but another big deal for the town of Hamden, for the citizens, for tax, taxes. So anyways, we also discussed ordinance amendments by the, with the code enforcement officer and draft subdivision ordinances. We discussed possible rezoning of, of Western Avenue, continuance of that down to one A. And we had a individual, a citizen here, telling how he had talked to a lot of the citizens going up one A, how they have no objection now to turning a lot of that area into a commercial, per se, area rather than just residential. And we talked about rezoning and some other issues, but that was about it.
Thank you. And in the finance committee tonight, we started going over the review of council rules, making some changes, working our way through that. We've got probably two-thirds of the way through it tonight. It's worked out good. On the new business, we discussed hiring freeze, which you've already heard about, so we won't go over that again. And that was everything that was on finance. So with that, we'll move on to the managers' report.
I'll be out of the office from Thursday, February twelfth, until I return on Monday, February twenty-third for hip replacement. I will be available via cell or email during the week I'm out. Which brings me to the second item, which is the next scheduled council meeting is for February seventeenth. At this time, we have no agenda items that would be harmed by waiting until March second. The council met recently on Saturday for its goals and objectives, and tonight is a makeup for the February second meeting. Do you wish to hold the February seventeenth meeting or to wait and have the next council meeting to be held on March second? That's a, let me get to the end of this, we can talk about, but that's the question, one of the questions. Following the discussion that we had at the goals and objectives meeting on February seventh, I will be starting the advertisement process for a permanent public works director to replace interim director Greg Nash, who agreed to serve in a part-time capacity during the winter months. The process will take several months to complete, and, and I would note that, that this advertisement is with the blessing of the council from Saturday's meeting, so that's why that's moving forward. February twenty-third is the date of foreclosure for unpaid two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen property taxes. And at this time, it appears that we may have one property on which taxes are not paid. And if that occurs, I will bring it, be bringing it to the council for, for their action. And finally, as to the governor's budget, on Wednesday, February eighteenth, the legislature's appropriations committee and the Joint Standing Committee on Taxation are holding hearings on portion of the governor's budget, one of which is the revenue sharing issue. And on Thursday, February nineteen, there are hearings related to the Better Betty changes, along with changes to other tax reimbursement programs, including the homestead exemption. I will not be able to attend those hearings, but will be submitting testimony on municipal financial impacts to Hamden if those changes are made. So we're allowed to submit testimony either in writing or in person, and I'll be submitting the written testimony that documents harm to Hamden's fiscal position from loss of further revenue sharing funds and changes in the homestead, which although it advantages one group of citizens, those over sixty-five, it seriously disadvantages anyone under sixty-five who is currently receiving the ten thousand dollar homestead exemption. And the fact that that exemption, although it's a state exemption, is handled locally. So when people, if people were to see a, a tax increase, it would be through no, if the town and the school both didn't raise anything, a penny, if that exemption goes away for people under the age of sixty-five, people at the current, would see a hundred and seventy-five dollar increase in their tax bill regardless. No matter, and there's not a way for the town to mitigate that because we can't create a class of taxes that are different, and because it's not an exemption that everybody gets. So it's not, we can't address that kind of a oops, which for some people would double, for the majority of the population would go away entirely.
Sue, how many people are affected by that?
Hmm?
How many people are affected by that? Or take advantage of that right now? Do you know, in the Hamden?
Um, I think it's either eighteen or nineteen hundred parcels are, have, um, homestead exemptions.
Under sixty-five?
No, I, I, I can't split that for you right now.
Okay.
But back when we talked about doing, and the years start to run together, so I'm not sure which year this was, we talked about doing a, an exemption, a property tax credit for P, we can't do exemptions, doing a property tax credit for people over the age of sixty-five. And we analyzed our, and it also was people over sixty-five who had owned their, their property in town for more than a certain length of time. And I can't remember exactly what the, the proportion was, but the over sixty-five households, et cetera, of property classes was like twenty-six percent at the time, or twenty-seven. So what we'd end up doing is, this change would, for those that are owner-occupied, over sixty-five, that, even if it's thirty percent of the resident, would be, have a, a homestead exemption that's twice as much as their current is. So instead of getting the hundred and seventy-five dollar credit reduction, it would be a three hundred and fifty dollar reduction. And for everybody else who was getting the ten thousand dollar homestead exemption from the state, it would be an increase of a hundred and seventy-five dollars right off, before the town or the school or the county or anybody took a step. That, that would be the impact of that. So the, the last time that these programs were discussed, and they also include the property tax fairness credit, which used to be the tax and rent refund, we analyzed our tax base and who got what to provide information to the state so that they would know exactly who gets hurt and how much by these things. And we, it's my intent to provide that same kind of information. Last time, they had hearings in different communities. This time, it's in Augusta, and it's scheduled for then.
Sue? Would you be willing to share at least the bullet points of your testimony, so we're all on the same page?
Oh, I'd say, I, you're stuck with getting all of that.
Okay.
Whatever goes to the state goes to the council for, so you know what I said. But it also provides, most of what I do, it's not an opinion piece, it's a statistical piece in terms of how many people get affected and what way.
So do we want to talk about the council meeting on that meeting? Anybody have an objection to moving it to March second?
No. What were your dates? You're going to be out from the twelfth to the what, Sue?
I, I.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
I'll be out from this Thursday, which is the day of my surgery, and I'll be returning on the twenty-third, which is a week from Tuesday. Because the twenty, no, that, the twenty-third, which is a week from Monday. It was the council meeting that would be on a Tuesday because of next Monday's holiday, if you decide to hold it.
So we can call you Bionic Woman after that with new hip?
Well, all I can tell you is that it will make both of them. I only have two, so that's.
So what's the general consensus?
I think the thought of going to a council is something I can't, but I will take that in as part of the council. We'll, we'll support you, don't worry.
So is that the general consensus? All in favor of moving it to March second?
We have nothing that critical, Sue, that, that would.
Okay, everybody on moving it to March second? Okay. Take care of that. Okay. Next items, counselor comments. Counselor Royce?
No comment.
Counselor Wild?
No comment.
Counselor Shakespeare?
Yeah, I wanted, wanted to say I had the privilege with Counselor Ryder, our mayor, with Sue, with Denise, and my, my wife. Did I forget anybody? I don't think I, at the Chamber of, Bangor Chamber of Commerce, oh, well, yeah, but you weren't at our table.
I think good.
You were sudging it someplace else. And Counselor Royce was there too. But anyways, Counselor, we were there to honor Counselor Marvel, who didn't show up. Said he was sick, and I guess he was sick. But his daughter, his lovely daughter, did an excellent job of taking his place, so just wanted to say congratulations. Received a, what kind of award was it called? A public something?
It was the Arthur Comstock Personal Service Award.
Yeah. And it was an exceptional meeting. We all enjoyed it, and they had that first-time showing of that video that's on YouTube right now, of Bangor and Bangor. So if you get a chance to go on YouTube and watch that, I think, in fact, it might be on the Bangor Daily News also. That was very interesting.
Counselor Dupre?
No comments.
Counselor Marvel?
I was sick. Other than that, no comment.
Counselor McAvoy?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the, the public for paying attention tonight and to remember to shop local and buy American. Good night, Hamden.
And I think I just want to say that I think tonight was a good showing for the town council for this year, that even though there were some differences in the TIF and some of the agreements, that we got beyond the little things and got together as a group and made it work. And I'm pretty proud of the council for acting as a group and, and in my opinion, doing the right thing. Thank you very much. And do we have a motion?
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Yep.
Thanks. Thank you all for coming.